Any here, some for different purposes, but should be an interesting meeting. Welcome to our seven o'clock board meeting and will you please, who's gonna call the role? June, oh June, hi June's online, there she is, yes, will you please call the role?
Or not?
We had her earlier, we had her earlier. June, are you with us? We can't hear you. June is in Kansas City at a Missouri municipal league conference where David and I also were earlier today, so. She is operating virtually. No. No.
I can go ahead and call the role.
Yeah. We can call the role while she works on it.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Here.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Here.
Alderwoman Buse.
Here.
Alderwoman Patel.
Here.
Alderman Vader.
Here.
Alderman Hummel.
Here.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
City Manager Gibson.
Here.
City Attorney O'Keefe.
Here.
Okay, and before we get started with all of our business tonight, I just wanted to acknowledge, and especially great since people, so many people are here to hear about it. Our chief of, our fire chief, Ernie Rhodes has just come back from Hawaii. Where he has been assisting in the overall huge effort to help rescue and help prepare, you know, or not prepare, but recover from the emergency that they've had. Chief Rhodes, would you please come up and just tell us, you know, a few minutes of what you encountered there? I think everyone would love to hear about it and we're so proud to have somebody like Chief Rhodes, who is a member of the FEMA rescue team nationwide. The, as our fire chief, yeah, go ahead.
Yes ma'am, mayor, good evening, thanks for acknowledging, it certainly wasn't expecting that, but yes, was deployed to the Lahaina wildfires. Can't remember the exact day, but I was there for eighteen days and our mission was to search over two thousand structures that were completely destroyed by a wind driven fire that created structure to structure ignition, so. Had about five federal urban search and rescue teams deployed there with the command team and had about four hundred and fifty people working for the operations, working for the op section. And we managed to search all those structures over eighteen days utilizing canine human remains detection dogs. And it was a very technical operation, some structures were completely destroyed and just basically a slab or a foundation. And then some were multi-story and had to do selective debris removal with heavy equipment and stuff, so it was very technical. Sometimes it was even a little challenging because it was Okonas, which means outside continental United States, and so here in the St. Luc area, we can, we can draw a lot of resources really quick. And then when you're outside the USA, you have to be a little creative every once in a while, we had enough resources, but you have to manage those very well, so. Really, the people of Lahaina are strong and beautiful and courageous and their spirit is very strong and you know, we worked really hard for them and it was well worth the trip to try to reconnect their, their, their loved ones with them. And so just grateful for, you know, you all allow me to deploy and do that and serve the nation, so I'm very thankful and humbled to be able to do that, so thank you.
Thank you for doing it and we're really proud, as I said, to have you on the staff. Now's the time in our meeting when we ask for public requests and petitions, so anybody who's here tonight to talk to us about anything that is not on our agenda tonight. This is your chance, so I'll give you that chance and, and then, do we have anybody online? Anybody online who wanted to talk about something not on our agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right into the agenda and we, the first item will be the city manager's report.
Yes, the city of Clayton's municipal code provisions related to solid waste and recycling were first adopted in nineteen forty-seven and then revised in nineteen seventy. Specific sections were later amended to reflect the waste collection practices and contracts in place at that time. The city of Clayton has contracted with Republic Services for the collection and disposal of solid waste, recycling, yard waste and compost from all single family and multifamily properties. The new contracts go into effect on October first, twenty twenty-three. On October first, twenty twenty-three, to change the waste collection service from city funded to resident build. The new waste collection agreements require certain provisions in the municipal code to align with the new practices. The proposed amendments will take effect on October first, twenty twenty-three along with the new contract. The required changes include the elimination of a current provision that allows private disposable contracts for residential customers. The city is also taking this opportunity to update the code sections to provide enhanced regulatory clarity and align the regulations with current practices. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen improve an ordinance amending Article One Collection Service and Regulations and Article Two Recycling of Chapter Two Thirty-five Garbage and Trash of the Municipal Code.
Thank you. I know that there are a number of folks here tonight that want to address us on this and that is great, we welcome you. I think before we have any comments from up here, which I don't know that we have too many, I would like to go ahead and entertain the input from our visitors and to that degree, I'm just gonna start off by asking that I see Mr. Kinman here is the sort of president of the CCBA Clayton Condo Board Association and, and since you're speaking for many, I think we'll ask you to come on up first and give sort of an overview of everybody's thoughts.
Very good, thank you, Madam Mayor. Honorable members of the board, great to be with you this evening. For the record, I am Brian Kinman, address one fifty-five Crandall Plaza, Unit nine oh two, here in Clayton, six three one oh five. As the mayor pointed out, I am I am here tonight really as a member of the Board of the Clayton Condominium Associate, I'm sorry, the Clayton Condominium Building Association, as well as a member of the Board of the Crescent Homeowners Association. So in that regard, I, I put that out there first because I think it's important to understand that all the emails, and I've been sending you emails, you've been getting those, that have come from me, have been discussed with each of those boards together, so the concept of what has been in all those emails is not just my concept, it is all of us in agreement in terms of where, what we were looking at and discovering. We have also shared those with the hundred, roughly hundred and forty people who live in the Crescent and roughly almost two thousand people, including the hundred and forty in the Crescent that are a part of the CCBA, so there's been a lot of floating of this information and a lot of discussion about it, so in that regard, I'm up here to sort of represent the thoughts that have come from that. And while I don't want to sit there and just read you the emails, you've already done that, I just want to kind of go over a couple of, I think, key points. Number one, first and foremost, all of us participated in a detailed budget review with, with David, with the mayor and with some others a couple of times last summer as we were getting ready to, as the city was getting ready to think about the budget going forward. And the idea of pulling the, the waste removal costs out of that budget and putting it in the hands of the individual citizens was discussed at that time, we were in agreement at that time and we're still in agreement with that, we think that is an appropriate and good thing to do, so we're, we're behind that a hundred percent. I think the other side of this thing is we completely understand and David has written some responses to us about how the city views its responsibilities for safety, including safety related to the management of waste in this city. We completely understand those, accept those, think those are reasonable and make an awful lot of sense. I think it's really about the manner in which we all go about this that is gonna be really important. So we have been in discussions and understood at higher levels, you know, what was, what was transpiring last year as relates to, you know, the, the idea of moving forward with this contract with Republic or whoever it was going to be, the bidding process that you went through and everything else, we understood that, we accepted broadly at high levels how that was going to go. Our expectation, we're coming out of that honestly, was that we viewed it and said, well, if they're gonna end up with a contract with somebody that's been bid like this and the contract is for something of this size and this magnitude, there's gonna be some great economies of scale that will be in there, so we fully expected as a result of that, that the kinds of rates that the citizens would be asked to be paying would be a worse case basis, fair market value, if not even discounted a little bit because of those economies of scale. So most of us, particularly in the condos, sat back and, you know, we have, we have budget processes too. And those budget processes begin, you know, in the winter time and move into the spring, so we were, before this contract was done, we were already thinking about what we thought those were going to be, and I'll speak for the Crescent for a moment. In the Crescent, we were putting into our budget an estimate based upon additional monies that we'd already been paying Republic for extra pickups along with conversations with some of our member condos, what they'd been paying Republic for those pickups. And through all of that, we had come to a conclusion that we were gonna be looking at about a forty-five hundred dollar a year tab that would be coming from that, that was our expectation, nothing more than some of that general idea, understanding it could be very different. So when we did receive the information about what the contract value was going to be from Republic, we were surprised that it was as large as it was. The number based upon our current situation and status is about ninety-six hundred dollars a year, so a little bit more than twice what we were estimating it was going to be. So as we sat down and looked through that, we decided, understanding that we have Section Two Thirty-five point one two oh, that ordinance that you were, David was just referring to in place, we decided, well, let's go out and get a bid. Our expectation was the bid would probably be close, maybe it would even be a little higher because we again assumed there would be some economies of scale. When the bid came back, it was literally at thirty-seven percent of the Republic bid. So we were a little shocked and very pleasantly surprised, I'll say, in terms of looking at that bid. It was at that time, because of my role as President of the CCBA, discussed it with my board and we pushed this information out to our member organizations and said, you know, just want you to know, this is kind of what we've been doing, we're we're a best practice oriented kind of organization, so we went through that process and several of our member organizations decided to follow up on that and get their own bid, others thought they were more of a wait and see kind of contest in terms of where they are, so there are several examples that are coming along, there are a couple of other condos that are in the membership that hadn't experienced similar to ours, where, you know, the rates that they were able to get from a, a waste management were about half, a little bit less than half of what the, the Republic rate was that was coming in. We have other situations where the Republic rate was lower than the competitive bid that was gonna be there, generally not much, it was pretty close most of the time, but you know, we weren't surprised to see that. And we had one situation, specifically the Whitehall, where the Whitehall had been, they had been paying for two additional pickups in addition to the one that came with the city payment that was going on before, so they kind of did the math and said, okay, if we're paying this for those two pickups and the third one comes in, we'll increase that by fifty percent, that's our expectation of what we would be paying, again, when they got the result from Republic about what the new contract would be, it was double, actually more than double that number. So there's a variety of experiences in terms of where they are, and I think it caused all of us to step back and talk about it and think through it. And what we came to is that part of the problem here is that, you know, while single family homes have similar makeup and a little bit more ubiquitous in terms of the way you might collect trash, maybe they're not perfect, but more like that, in the world of the condos, there are many, many differences. We are very much like commercial buildings, many of us, and we have our own unique ways of collecting the trash, the waste and putting it out for collection, so you end up with a lot of different results, so trying to put together a, you know, kind of a formula, formulary approach to designing pricing is very challenging, very difficult, and I think, you know, this limited result that we've gone through is demonstrating that that's part of the problem. To continue the discussion though, again, under Section Two Thirty-five point one two oh, which is our right, we went ahead and at the Crescent, we actually entered into a contract with Waste Management, we've got a signed contract with them to move forward and that was our expectation. When we went to communicate to Republic that we were gonna be terminating our relationship with them as we were moving on, which was just about a week and a half ago, they explained to us, oh no, the contract that we have with the city, you can't do that. So we're looking at Two Thirty-five point one two oh and we're looking at the, the response from Republic and saying, okay, we're not understanding, so we called over the city, it took a few days, but we got a response that confirmed what Republic had said to us, so we have to admit we're a little confused. Okay, so as we look at that, we think that under the current law, we have done what we're allowed to do and we have followed the law in doing it, we've entered into a contract to do that and many of our members have solicited bids under the same philosophy in terms of moving forward. The other side of this though, is that we have been moving forward, I think it's important to understand why we're looking at this, it's not just about any value benefit we're gonna get today. When we stepped back and looked at the concept of how this is put together, this year, this fiscal year that ends at the end of this month and the years before, there was a check and balance on making a negotiation with somebody like Republic. It, it lived inside of the financial budget of this city. So this city in making those decisions and the Board of this city in confirming those decisions always understood how that fit into that budget, so there's a check and balancer, can we afford it, does this make sense, the challenges can take place. Now we're asking, under this current philosophy and the new ordinance, we're, we're asking, or the city is saying, we want to negotiate, but the check and balance doesn't exist anymore. The check and balance does exist in Section Two Thirty-five point one two oh, because I can pick up and go to another contractor. If you take that away, there is no check and balance. And so the concern is not just, again, now, what happens in three years when there's a new bid? And more importantly, when Republic wakes up and realizes nobody else is gonna be bidding against them. So how do we, how do we handle that, how do we manage that and keep that real and proper is something to think about. I think in addition to that, it's important, and I just want to share with you, I have, I have had other organizations that are not in the CCBA reach out to me. You know, one of the nursing homes locally said, I've been hearing about this, can you share with me the emails in which you're saying, we're trying to get our arms around this as well? We have spoken with several of the large apartment buildings and, you know, like Clarendale and whatnot that are going on. They are unaware that they are gonna be pulled into this contract. The only notice that they've had is basically the same notice that we all received in the mail, this thing, in terms of where it is, and when we spoke to them, most of them said, oh yeah, I got this solicitation from Republic, not understanding that this was a communication from Republic. So I, I, and in discussions with many of them, and again, I have not audited this situation, all right, but the feedback that we've gotten, I know that some of the apartments are using waste management currently and have been under contract with them for years and have been paying them for years. So if you pull them in, two problems, one, they're not aware of it, and two, they got a contract already that they've been working through. Others are using waste, or I'm sorry, using Republic, but I think, you know, not, I don't know what the numbers are going to be, but I think you might want to be prepared for the fact that like what happened with Whitehall, the new numbers are gonna be substantially higher than the old numbers. There's gonna be reaction, there's already a contract, there's some other issues there, so I think there's just some things to think about and looking at. I've read in detail several times through this ordinance. I think there were areas in the ordinance, in the ordinance that probably need to be frankly cleaned up a little bit. There is no definition of residential in the ordinance, ordinance, and there, and there really needs to be. And there's even places in the ordinance that talks about under, like for example, Section Two Thirty-five point oh three oh, the city shall provide for the collection of all residential solid waste in the city. Again, we haven't defined residential, we've defined dwellings, but not residential. And said, collection service shall be provided by city refuse collectors, plural, not singular. So are you allowing for multiple collectors or not? The question is not clear in terms of where we are. The other side of this is, what do we really have here? I think there's some things to think through, should these condominiums be treated as a ubiquitous unit? Or should they be treated like the commercial units are, commercial buildings are in the city of Clayton? Allowing us to negotiate our own deal and go forward. The other side, if you leave Two Thirty-five point one two oh in place, if, if Republic's done a good job in setting up the pricing, we'll stay with Republic, if they haven't, we'll go out and get another bid and we'll use that and go from there. So we have all those issues and I understand that you've signed the contract, I get it. That doesn't mean it can't be discussed, it doesn't mean it can't be reevaluated or renegotiated. Perhaps there's even some legal precedent to allow that. I, I am not a lawyer, most of you are. But I can only point out from my years in the business community, and the contract was negotiated that requires, you know, the city to let them collect all trash in residential side of things. And yet, there's a, at the time the contract was signed, there's a, there's an ordinance on the books that wouldn't allow that to happen. I don't know what that means for the contract, but maybe there's a little edge there, so. We're saying to you, our message from the CCBA and Crescent is I think this needs more thought, this ordinance clearly needs more thought, and I think the world of condominiums in particular are different enough that, that the approach that has been used, and I respect and understand how complex it is to put something like this together, but the approach that's been used needs to be thought through in a little bit more detail, and we stand ready, as we always do, Madam Mayor, to participate in any groups that want to think through this, if you need that help from the citizens, we're ready to go. So I thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it very much and always open for questions.
Okay, great. I think rather than have a back and forth on this tonight, I think what we really are here to do is listen. And so we're gonna do that and I know anybody who's expecting us to make a decision tonight, vote tonight, we have put it out there already that we are not gonna do that because we want to hear from everyone and then want to deliberate on that, have time, think about it and, and consider whatever options might be available to us and probably also talk to Republic, so. Thank you for that great overview, that was really comprehensive and, and thoughtful, and so I, I want, I know there are other people here, I don't know if they would like to speak as well. If you do, I, I, that is, that is great, but I would ask that you not repeat things that have already been said, but if you want to affirm your support of those things, you can simply come up, say who you are, give your address and say, yeah, we support that, so without making everybody sit here to hear things over and over again. We've all been to meetings like that, okay, yeah, so I'll let you decide who comes up first, but please give your name and your address.
My name is Jan Spalding, eighty twenty-five Maryland, it's Maryland Walk, I'm four C, I have a number of our residents here as well. I, I guess the thing that disappoints us a little bit here is that we were told in June, we had a big meeting over at the Clariton and our manager asked David Gibson specifically if we would be able to, or if we had the ability to negotiate our own contract, and he said absolutely not, okay? Well, the, the reality of it is that that just simply was not true. And I find that to be very distressing, okay, I, I mean, I, I love this city and I think you guys by and large do a very good job, but this kind of thing really shakes my confidence a lot and shakes the confidence of, of our residents. The other thing is adding on to the whole business about commercial, you have to understand is that we're a hundred kitchens, okay, we're not like, you know, a house that has just one family, you know, putting, you know, garbage or smelly garbage out there, we got a hundred people dumping garbage down in our bins every day that's food oriented. So I think we really are very much more a commercial than a residential type organization, I'd ask that you consider that when you recast.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak, my name is Elizabeth Burrow, I am the Treasurer at Hanley Towers. I will not repeat, but we obviously didn't do quite as well as the Crescent in terms of what we negotiated, but I did forward a service agreement to our Alderman, Mr. Berkowitz today that indicated that we are about fifty percent of the rate with Waste Management than we would be with Republic.
Talk into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, our, I forwarded the service agreement with Waste Management where they quoted a price that actually, price that actually had more lifts for recycling than what we currently have. And it was about half, fifty percent of what we would be paying under the rate cards that are published. The other thing I did want to mention, when you talk about the comparison between a commercial building and a residential building, I believe the way those rate cards were developed is they determined the sort of the single family rate cards were two units or less. And anything above that went into the multifamily rate card. And we, our seventy units were probably about a hundred people. The economics associated with, I'm gonna put aside the residential because that was a separate contract, but if you're dealing with a multifamily, that's three, four, six, ten units, the economics of picking up their solid waste is very different than dealing with a high-rise condominium. When you understand how our trash is collected, it's put out, it's put in bins of very specific size, sizes, there's an automatic lift on the truck, there's no human intervention. That is not true with smaller facilities, so we clearly have the equipment on site and we have sort of the vendor trucks that are more geared towards commercial than residential. And so the economics of the vendor are very different when they're picking up a very large facility than multifamily, that's significantly lower. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Butler, I live at the Whitehall, in fact, I used to be neighbors to, across the street from Susan and around the block from Michelle over in Claverick Park. I serve as the Treasurer on the Whitehall Board, I also serve as one of the Board members on the Clayton Condo Building Association. I just want to keep this simple, I, I completely support and actually the Whitehall completely supports the argument and discussions that Brian made. I also want to reinforce the last point. We have two four cubic yard containers in the back, big dumpsters, ones for trash, ones for the recycling. It's outside, it's very accessible. I've, in the last week, driven the Clayton commercial areas, candidly, we are probably easier and cheaper to service our trash and recycling than any building in the city, because all they have to do is drive down very easily down the width of our driveway, go around to the back, which is wide in a parking area and just forklift this thing, dump it into their thing and leave, and it happens for the residents that hear it in the morning, it happens very quickly. So again, getting back to this, it, as Brian points out, there's a whole variety of condos, but if you think about like the condos and some of the smaller things that might just be three units, that's different than, you know, these vertical buildings, you know, where we're, you know, nineteen stories. And again, in our case, it's a very quick and efficient dump. And so really to the trash collection company, we're pleased with Republic, but as Brian pointed out, we were anticipating one number based on, you know, the two that we paid for, we are anticipating a fifty percent increase. Instead, we saw more than double what we anticipated, which is actually more than three times what we were paying before, so thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address this for us, yes?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Alderman, my name's Tony Sukinik, I'm an attorney with Sandberg, Phoenix and Von Gonnard. And our offices are at one twenty South Central here in Clayton. We represent the Crescent Condominium, it's a seventy unit condominium, as Brian said, with three commercial units. It's really simple. It's logical for the city to shift the economic burden of the costs of refuse to be billed directly to the owners when the city's underwater. But it's irreconcilable for me, I can't logically fathom why we would eliminate Section Two Three Five One Two Oh. It's been here for seventy-six years. And clearly, your vendor, when they made the proposal, was well aware, it's been on the books since nineteen forty-seven. Not only were they aware, I would conjecture that they probably were under contract with some of the multifamily apartments separate and apart where those apartments were paying for the services beyond the, the services that were being subsidized by the city. For that reason alone, sometimes it's just easier to leave things For that reason alone, sometimes it's just easier to leave things on the books. And we are petitioning you to leave two-three-five-point-one-two-oh on the books of the city. It was on the books when Republic made their proposal. They have no reason to cry foul. They, in fact, they misled people that, from my association that we represent. When they inquired, they were told they they couldn't even solicit bids housewives. But the law has been on the books. It's been an ordinance. And it should remain an ordinance. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, any any other comments regarding this topic? Okay, I I don't, as I said, we're not gonna debate it tonight. We're gonna use this input to think it through. But um, I do want to just say on behalf of our board and our staff that we did spend a year trying to do just that. And we do feel strongly that this, that we want a consistent service throughout the city and we want a um, a quality service throughout the city. And so we're we're very concerned that if we, we are concerned if we go piecemeal, that will endanger that. But we, what we, but again, we are going to take all this input, think about it and think about what options might be out there to create a win-win for everybody here. So we thank you for coming and we have a very long agenda following this. If you would like to stay, you can. Uh, I think right now we, what we're going to do is go ahead and introduce the ordinance just for the first time. As you know, we vote on everything twice in order to approve it. So in order to kind of complete our discussion tonight, we'll, we will introduce the ordinance unless somebody doesn't want to. And um, and then we will table it until our next meeting. Any questions?
Yeah, a lot of time to to consider real thing.
Yeah, that's all right. I I we we think it will. Well, we wouldn't have a final vote. Okay.
Can you, can you, we're just only, because the people on Zoom can't hear you. That's the problem. So that's why you just have to talk to Mike. Because otherwise, all these people that.
At the beginning of this session, the honorable mayor said that there would not be any vote on this tonight.
Final vote.
No, that's not what she said.
She said any vote?
That sounds like a lawyer's response. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry what you said.
That sounds like a lawyer's response. That's not what I heard.
Yeah, we we did specifically post on the agenda as well that there'd be a first reading this evening.
Yeah, and so in order to pass anything, we always have two readings. And the that second reading is where we really make the decision, which we said we would.
And this can be amended between the first and second reading.
Yeah, so I I think, I think we're okay doing it this way. I think this, we, as David said, we had posted it before we even considered doing all this. So we kind of have to follow our proper parliamentary procedures here um as a group. But um, I understand why that giving you pause. But again, we are not gonna make any decision tonight. We're simply introducing the ordinance. Yes, David, you want to come up and give your comment?
Just respectfully, Mayor, I'm not an attorney. I'm an engineer.
Yeah, me neither.
But I did hear you say there was gonna be no vote tonight. And interpreting the way this works, when you have this official reading, that really is like the first vote. And then, then the next one's a second vote. So just as a non-attorney, it sounded very much to me when you said there's no vote tonight, then there was gonna be no reading because that's how. So that respectfully.
Not being a lawyer, I might not have said that well, but I'm gonna turn to our city manager and our attorney and see what they have to say about all this. Do we have?
It's up to the board whether or not you'd like to introduce them.
So do we have to introduce it? I guess that's the question.
I mean, we can do two readings in one night. We do it on a regular basis.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's true.
It's so like.
And that's the situation we were trying to avoid. That's why we had posted it.
And so I'll just, I'll just describe that for a minute because um, and again, we can, we can do whatever the board uh wants us to do. But a lot of times we do introduce things because people that aren't here, who aren't paying attention, will then know about it. And then they have an opportunity between, between now and whenever we attack it again to uh provide input. A lot of times people don't sit up and pay attention until we we do something at the meeting. So, but I'm just saying that, that's why we generally read something once and wait two weeks to pass it if it's something that's important. So um.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we table the first reading for this evening. We table it until our next meeting.
Okay. Okay. And and it's a voice vote, correct? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can I add, can I add just one thing?
I have to say any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, now you may.
Uh, just the the tenor tonight, everyone on this board is listening very hard and appreciating very much the public input. That's how a city runs well. We're up here as your neighbors, doing our best. So we are tabling this for further consideration. We have heard you. And I just want that understood. There's no backroom dealing or anything else. So please appreciate the staff and the board's efforts in this regard.
Can we make sure we get the output from whatever discussions you have and any revisions in advance of the meeting so that we can take a close look at them?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could, if I could comment, I I did vote for tabling it, but I will say I believe the standard procedure on any piece of legislation that is a subject of controversy, the standard procedure is to introduce it exactly for that reason. Introduce it, hold it over to the next meeting and then vote on it. I I feel certain now that if the, if this is the final decision to have both readings at the second meeting, we will be criticized because why did we take up the matter and vote on it at the same night it was introduced? So I I think the decision to table the matter um is is not a wise decision. I think the the general law in Missouri is exactly that. You can go to the St. Louis County Council or any organization. You introduce the bill the first night. It means nothing other than you're putting it out there for consideration and then you voted on it at the second meeting. So I I think the idea of tabling it, the whole thing until the next meeting, sets us up for criticism, which is unwarranted because I think we did it right the first time. Introduce it at a meeting, vote on it at the second meeting in two weeks. As as the city manager said, it doesn't mean at all and that this ordinance can't be amended substantially and circulated. Doesn't prevent any of that from happening. The right way to do it, introduce it, and then whatever happens, you vote on it at the second meeting.
Okay, and just one second. So thank you for um essentially repeating what I said earlier. So we, we though want to um, we we want to honor the things that you have said in your request, so we have tabled it. And so um, we we will then be voting on it twice the next time we meet, twice in one meeting. So just in case anybody of your friends say, oh, they didn't give us time to consider it, they voted out twice at one meeting. You can explain that you guys had input to that decision. Go ahead.
I just had a question.
Yes.
So this would be addressed at the meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
Is that the plan?
That's the plan.
Thank you.
Okay, I think.
Yeah, I uh.
Yep.
Yeah, and I totally agree with Alderman Fader. I think he's completely right. But under the circumstances here this evening, I think it was appropriate and is appropriate for us to to table it for now. And 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 possibly only because the audience has a misunderstanding of how this procedure operates. Uh, and I don't think it really does anything to derail or hurt our, our ability to still consider it uh and deliberate about it and change it and do whatever we want to do with this statute or this ordinance if we chose to choose to do so. So, but I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so unless there's any further input from our audience members or anybody online, we are going to move on in our agenda to some other items. And so we do, Alderman Beus mentioned, we hear you and uh we respect you guys and we are glad you came to share with us your input. So uh just know that we're earnestly trying to do the right thing. So uh have a good rest of your evening or feel free to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay. One minute to clear out. All right. Um, all right, uh, everyone, thank you for bearing with us through that agenda item. It's important and um thanks for being patient. Okay, we're moving on to the collective bargaining agreement for police.
Yes, the bargaining representatives have met, discussed and agreed upon the attached successor collective bargaining agreement, which contains a resolution of the issues that affect the wages and terms and conditions of the union members' employment. The police union members have ratified this agreement and it is being presented for board approval. The agreement has a term of three years ending on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Key provisions of the C B A that were not included in the city's current practice are first, a stipend for detectives. It was increased from one thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars annually to two thousand one hundred dollars annually. Juneteenth was officially added to the paid holiday list. Corporal is now a position with an established pay grade rather than a stipend. Pay was increased commensurate with the city's compensation study and the pay scale will be increased by two-point-five percent in both fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six. Post-accident drug testing was revised to be made consistent with the current policy established for the fire department. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Eastern Missouri Coalition of Police, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge fifteen.
All right, I'll open up for discussion. Any comments from our audience? They see none? I'll ask if there are any questions or comments from the board going in order of seniority. Not or, okay. Anything over here? Okay, okay, very good. Um, Alderman Berkowitz.
I'd like to introduce bill number six-nine-eight-seven to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Clayton and the Eastern Missouri Coalition of Police, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge fifteen for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, wage increases to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number six-nine-eight-seven, first reading and ordinance approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Eastern Missouri Coalition of Police, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge fifteen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Berkowitz.
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number sixty-nine-eight-seven on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the minutes reflect the board is giving unanimous consent.
I'd like to introduce bill number sixty-nine-eight-seven to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Clayton and the Eastern Missouri Coalition of Police, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge fifteen for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, wage increases to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number six-nine-eight-seven, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Eastern Missouri Coalition of Police, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge fifteen.
But June, are you with us? Uh-oh. June? Okay, June, we're gonna have Andrea call the roll.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Mickey Andrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Abuse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Okay, next, the bargaining agreement with the fire department.
Yes, the bargaining representatives have met, discussed and agreed upon the attached successor collective bargaining agreement, which contains a resolution of the issues that affect the wages and terms and conditions of the union members' employment. The fire union members have ratified this agreement and it is being presented for board approval. The agreement has a term of three years ending on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Key provisions of the C B A include the city will register and cover the cost of every member to be added to Missouri firefighters' critical illness pool. C B A was updated to include a one-hundred-and-forty-four hours special event overtime cap that was approved in twenty twenty-one. Juneteenth was officially added to the paid holiday list. Engineer is now a position with an established pay grade rather than a stipend and pay was increased commensurate with the city's compensation study. The pay scale will be increased two-point-five percent in both fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the collective bargaining agreement with the International Association, Association of Firefighters Local two-six-six-five.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Online, any discussion from our board? Hey.
I'd like to introduce bill number sixty-nine-eight-eight to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Clayton and the International Association of Firefighters Local two-twenty-six-six, two-six-six-five for fiscal year two-two thousand twenty-four, wage increases to be read for the first time by title only.
Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number six-nine-eight-eight, first reading and ordinance approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Clayton Fire Department Shop of the International Association of Firefighters Local two-six-six-five.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think that needs to be a roll call.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay, well. Doesn't say it on my sheet, but okay.
She doesn't have a script.
Go ahead.
Yes.
I think it's after the second. Yeah, yeah, okay.
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number sixty-nine-eight-seven on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let the minutes reflect the board is giving unanimous consent.
I'd like to introduce bill number sixty-nine-eight-eight to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Clayton and the International Association of Firefighters Local two-six-six-five for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, wage increases to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number six-nine-eight-eight, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Clayton Fire Department Shop of the International Association of Firefighters Local two-six-six-five.
Now, yes. Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Abuse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
All right, moving on to the public hearing for property tax levies.
Yes, first, I'd just like to thank everybody on the police and fire negotiating teams. I see we have Susan Peterson with Fraternal Order of Police representing them in the back as well. Um, the both processes went really, really well. Everything was professional and extremely productive, so I appreciate everyone's effort. All right. Property tax levies. Each year, the city must approve property tax levies, which are then submitted to St. Louis County for billing. As part of the property tax levy process, the board is holding a public hearing to seek public input on the proposed tax rates. Calendar year twenty twenty-three is a reassessment year and there were significant changes in residential and commercial assessed values. The city's experienced, the city experienced significant new construction growth, increasing residential assessed values by over one-point-seven million dollars and commercial assessed values by over thirty-three million dollars. Subject to the maximum voter-approved rate of tax levy, the city is allowed to receive additional revenue up to the lower of five percent or the Consumer Price Index or C P I, which was six-point-five percent for this year and for the value of new construction. Per the fiscal year twenty twenty-four proposed budget plan, we are submitting the maximum allowable rates for your review. For the general fund, general revenue, residential rate will be decreased by one cent. The commercial, uh, the commercial uh rate will be decreased by seven-point-seven cents and there's no change to the personal property tax. For general obligation debt service, residential, commercial and personal property, all decreased by three-tenths of a cent. Police building debt service, residential decreased by two-tenths of a cent, commercial decreased by one-point-two cents and personal property had no change. On the, uh, the special business district, which is in our downtown area, residential decreased by three-tenths of a cent and commercial decreased by one-point-five cents. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen conduct a public hearing and have a first reading of an ordinance setting the annual property tax rates for calendar year twenty twenty-three, which is our fiscal year twenty twenty-four, at the rates referenced in the memorandum.
Thank you. So I will open it up for discussion while at the same time requesting proof of publication, which I forgot to do earlier. Any comments or questions? Just wanted to just note for everyone that every one of those rates decreased, which we've been doing every year since the nineties. Yeah, okay. All right, since there's no discussion, I will close the public hearing. And Alderman Berkowitz.
I'd like to introduce bill number sixty-nine-eight-nine to approve. I'd like to introduce Bill number 6989 to approve the proposed property tax levies for tax year 2023, fiscal year 2024, to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 6989, first reading in ordinance levying and establishing the rate of annual taxes for general municipal purposes, police building debt service, general obligation debt service and special business district purposes to be collected by the City of Clayton, Missouri for the year 2023.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to the budget first reading, I'll open the public hearing and request proof of publication.
Yes, in August, the Board of Aldermen received the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2024 operating capital improvements budgets. As part of the budget process, the board is required to hold a public hearing to seek public input prior to formal budget adoption. The public hearing is occurring tonight, September 12th, 2023. The board reviewed the proposed budget during a public meeting on August 18th, 2023. The Board of Aldermen has studied this proposed budget and the public has had opportunity for reviewing the budget document. The attached ordinance approving the fiscal year 2024 operating capital improvements budget is presented for first reading, a summary of the budget that includes a reconciliation of changes since the proposed budget was included in the packet. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen conduct a public hearing and have the first reading of the fiscal year 2024 operating capital improvements budget as presented in the proposed budget. And I would just mention, as far as those reconciliation items, they were on page 28 within the packet. We did reflect the increase in transfer for the special business district and then the associated expenditures related to additional events there. So that change was made. We did have a slight change in personnel cost. I think it was about $17,000, here we go, $17,530. So that was a reduction. And then we had a decrease relative to the municipal garage project of $164,000. And then finally, you find us seeing a big amount that went up on the revenue side of things. And that particular change, sorry, this screen just flipped on me, is $1,214,800. That is the federal grant that's being received for the central business district resurfacing project. So those are the changes that have been made since the budget was reviewed with the Board of Aldermen on August 18th.
Great, thank you for covering that. All right, any discussion? Any questions from the audience online? No, okay, I will close the public hearing. Alderman Berkowitz.
I'd like to introduce Bill number 6990 to approve the proposed fiscal year 2024 to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 6990, first reading. An ordinance adopting an annual budget for fiscal year 2024 commencing on October 1, 2023, and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, I just want to comment for those who aren't, don't participate in these meetings a lot, especially our two folks that came for trash. We, we are doing what we normally do with something important like the budget. We are holding a first reading. We're letting people have time to consider it and then we'll come back and do it, have the second reading at the next meeting. We, we also, I also want to point out that, you know, there weren't any questions tonight. We have gone over this thing, you know, umpteen times in other kinds of meetings before just to discuss and ask questions and so on. So that said, moving on. I'll, I'll open the public hearing for the rezoning of 500 South Brentwood and ask for proof of publication.
Thank you. This request is for a public hearing for review and consideration of the rezoning of certain property from R5 medium-low density multiple-family dwelling district to C1 neighborhood commercial district. The subject property is located at southeast corner of the intersection of South Brentwood Boulevard and Roseland Drive. The 7,900 square foot site is developed with a one-story commercial building that is currently vacant. The request was recommended for approval by the Plan Commission on August 21st, 2023. The subject property is developed with a single-story commercial structure that previously housed a dry cleaner. The front of the property contains parking and the rear contains a service point that connects to Roseland Drive. Properties to the north are zoned C1 and contain commercial uses. The structures are primarily two stories and contain parking fronting the street. Properties to the south are developed with three-story multifamily structures and are zoned R5 and include below-grade parking. Properties to the east contain single-family homes are zoned R2, single-family dwelling district, and to the west is a special development district containing offices and green space. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to C1. The zoning district is described in the code as the most restrictive commercial district intended to provide a variety of goods and services within a pedestrian-friendly commercial environment, compatible to adjacent residential areas, thereby maintaining the quality of life established in neighborhoods. A table provided in the packet identifies the permitted and conditional uses in the C1 district. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the rezoning request with the conditions set forth in the ordinance for adoption.
Very good. All right, I'll open the discussion. Is anyone in the audience or anyone online have a question or a point they'd like to make about this? No, okay, great. Anybody on our board have questions or comments about this? Right, yes, Mr. Fader.
I do, yeah, okay. I was wondering, I, and I might have missed it, but I didn't actually see who the applicant is or if we know what their, my impression is we know what they intend to do with the site, but I don't see that spelled out.
So the applicant is the, the property owner and the owner of that property, there's a sign out front right now looking for, for tenants. He had stated to the Plan Commission that his intention would be to have some sort of small office in that building. So the building as it stands is going to remain. He has no intention to demolish the building and redevelop the site in any way. He just wants to reuse the building for that purpose.
So like a simple commercial, small scale operation?
Correct.
Okay.
I, when I, I kind of, when he was at the Plan Commission and I kind of inquired as to why maybe he wasn't gonna, because it, you know, is zoned residential, although it's always been a non-conforming use because it's been commercial for, I think David said, like forever. So it's such a, it's a relatively small site that you couldn't really build much on it and you wouldn't want to build this, probably not a single-family home that faced Brentwood right there. So, yeah, I mean, I would anticipate maybe a financial advisor or something.
Right.
And I would guess if any, I mean, it couldn't be anything that needed substantial parking or anything like that, so.
Just a quick question, I have no opposition to the zoning, but since my dog and I walk by the site many times, I'm always struck by the fact how little parking there is. And as a, as a, in its prior use as a laundry, people sort of come in and out and they're there for five minutes and they leave again. I have some concern as to how parking will be handled there, but I don't think that's germane to rezoning the site. But I don't know if that, if Anna can offer any insight or if we're getting ahead of ourselves, but I just would observe that I do have some concerns how that there's so little parking in the back, so little parking in the front. It's gonna be a tough use in any event.
Yes, so the parking based on the use will be evaluated at the time that we have a use for that site. But the C1 district, generally, the uses that are allowed within there would be kind of supported on this restricted site. The structure itself and the development of the property is non-conforming as mentioned under the current zoning. So it has been vacant for over a year and has lost some of those non-conforming rights. So it'll be easier to create a conforming use under a C1 district than it would be as the property is currently aligned. So the exact parking requirements or site access for, to, you know, abate any safety issues will have to be evaluated once we have a specific proposal.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, I will close the public hearing. Alderman, oh, Alderman Berkowitz has vacated. Okay, Alderwoman McAndrew.
I will introduce Bill number 6991 to approve a rezoning from R5 district to C1 district for 500 South Brentwood Boulevard to be read for the first time by title only.
Second. Hey, any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 6991, first reading in ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain property located at 500 South Brentwood Boulevard from the R5 district to the C1 district and other actions related thereto.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill number 6991 on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let the minutes reflect the board has given unanimous consent.
I'll introduce Bill number 6991 to approve a rezoning from R5 district to C1 district for 500 South Brentwood Boulevard to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number 6991, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain property located at 500 South Brentwood Boulevard from the R5 district to the C1 district and other actions related thereto.
Great. Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Abuse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
June, was that you trying to speak?
Yes.
Okay, well, there you are. You're on the phone, you get to do the next one then. Okay.
Okay, great.
Okay. All right, moving on, while I'll open the public hearing and request proof of publication for the rezoning and, and plat for 7814 Forsyth and all the other addresses listed there.
All right. This request is for a public hearing for review and consideration of the rezoning and related plan unit development for proposed mixed-use development. The rezoning, plan unit development and subdivision plat are being addressed together in this report, though the plat and the land use elements entail separate ordinances on the board's agenda. The project received Architectural Review Board approval and the Plan Commission recommended approval of the site plan, lot consolidation, rezoning and development plan on August 21st, 2023. The 29,759 square foot site includes five parcels located at the southeast corner of the intersection between South Central Avenue and Forsyth Boulevard. Site is currently improved with one and two-story buildings that have housed a variety of retail, restaurant and office uses. The majority of the tenant spaces are currently vacant. The project consists of the demolition of all structures on the subject properties, the rezoning of the six lots to PUD, the consolidation of the six lots and the construction of a, of a mixed-use commercial development on the site. The proposed development measures 20 stories and a total height of 239 feet. The structure would contain 245 hotel rooms, a ground floor restaurant with outdoor dining, a seventh floor bar and terrace, ballroom space, a ground-level jazz club and an attached 235 space parking garage. Access to the parking garage is proposed off of South, off of South Central Avenue. Pedestrian access to the restaurant and hotel is provided at the intersection and along South Central Avenue. Access to the jazz club is proposed on Forsyth Boulevard. City standard streetscape will be installed along the project limits on Forsyth Boulevard and South Central Avenue. A drop-off or valet zone is proposed on South Central Avenue from the intersection to the entrance of the parking garage. Plan unit developments are a distinct zoning district and therefore an application to rezone the subject properties from HDC, High Density Commercial District, and Northeast Downtown Overlay District was filed by the developer. The subject properties and proposed development meet the minimum requirements for a mixed-use PUD. Staff is of the opinion that the development contains a reasonable ratio of commercial and residential, of, of commercial uses, sorry. A PUD must provide public benefits to the surrounding neighborhoods and to the city above and beyond what can reasonably be achieved by application of the zoning provisions of the original zoning district. The Board of Aldermen may approve alternatives to the zoning regulations, subdivision regulations or design standards applicable to the property proposed to be rezoned to a PUD in exchange for developer-provided benefits. The number of public benefit points required to offset the requested code modifications for this project is 35. The Plan Commission recommended awarding 38 points for the proposed public benefits. Detailed tables containing the code modifications and public benefits were included in the packet. Staff believes that the proposed development meets all criteria for approval, including conformance with adopted plans, compatibility with the surrounding area, stormwater drainage, open space and landscaping, utilities, lighting, circulation, design and layout. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the rezoning and planning of the development per the required development commitments set forth in the ordinance Exhibit C, Forsyth Central PUD document. Staff also recommends the Board of Aldermen approve the subdivision plat with the conditions set forth in the ordinance for adoption, and I see that the developer is here this evening.
Let me clarify something. We're gonna have two separate votes, one for the rezone and one for the plat?
That is correct.
But you just won't read the report?
It's just one report for both items.
Okay, so right now, we're just considering the rezoning and I will open up for discussion. Any comments from anybody here or online? Questions from our audience? Okay, see none. I can ask the developer if, would you guys like to address us in any way?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Methard with Midas Development. I would be happy to go through our entire presentation or if you'd like to keep it brief. I'd be here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, why don't you hang there for a minute? I'm gonna ask our Aldermanic representative to the ARB if she'd like to kind of summarize or give us any input or any interesting things she, that came up then that informed the board of?
Um, I, I mean, I will say we had a, you know, certainly a long discussion. There were many comments by many members of the Plan Commission. I think overall, people think it's a very nice project. Obviously, some highlights are the seventh floor terrace, I think, will be very nice. It will be open to the public. It's not that it's just open to guests of the hotel. The restaurant will be, you know, obviously open to the public as well. It, you know, really the pictures of the hotel look very nice at the lobby level. Canopy is the name of the hotel brand that's coming. There's only a couple around the country, as I understand it. Obviously, I think something that this board has wanted for a long time is an entertainment entity in Clayton. I have, I was promised by the developer that if, for some reason, they can't find a independent operator of the jazz club, that they would do it themselves. Within, I believe, a year of occupancy was what we came up with, so that there is a concrete date. So that there is some sort of, you know, finite time period for when they get their occupancy permit. So I know that that was something we discussed quite a bit. I, I think everybody on the Plan Commission liked the way the hotel looked. Everybody likes the fact that it has the alternating colors of glass. I think some of the other things that, also, I think the art pieces, you know, there's some murals that are on the back, which is the back of the garage facing where the, which would face the jail, I guess. There'll also be a really nice mural as you walk up from what is now, I guess, our new Barcelona restaurant as you come up Forsyth, you know, rather than looking, I mean, because when you look down the alley, you will see the parking garage, but first you'll see, I think, a very attractive mural. There'll also be an art piece up at that corner where the restaurant will be, something, I think, hanging was what sounded like. So those are kind of the highlights, but I think overall, members of the Plan Commission really like the project and are excited to see it go forward.
And it was a unanimous?
It was, yes.
All right. Any, I'll just go around in order of seniority. Any comments or questions for the developer?
No, not really, looking over this and listening to that explanation. It, it seems it could bring a lot of benefit, the openness, the, the public, public accessibility and the sustainability awareness in there. You know, I always think silver's a low, a low bar to reach for with the LEED certification, but hopefully that will always be improving. So I think it looks great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Before, if I could just, too, there was, the one other thing I also wanted to mention was, of course, there was some concern, the garage is open facing east. It's high enough up that there won't be light, you know, the lights won't filter through like the headlights. Also, the way the garage is oriented, the lights would only really come through as cars are moving versus when they're parked. So, but also, there's no, the way that the building is gonna sit, you know, it's, there's no, I guess, residential community that necessarily will stare right at the garage. So that was certainly a concern that we talked to the developer about.
Good, I'm glad you addressed that. Alderwoman Patel.
Hi, I have one question for you about the terrace on the seventh level. So it sounds like it's, it's intended to have like a bar, but also described as open to the public. So it wouldn't, so like, you don't have to be like, is, would it be the case that you don't have to be purchasing things from? is, would it be the case that you don't have to be purchasing things from the bar in order to hang out on the terrace?
That is correct. The terrace actually sits adjacent to the ballroom, the bar on the seventh floor. So it can be used by all of those uses.
Cool.
Whilst the general public.
There, like, years ago, I was in San Francisco, and there's this, it's like a thing called POPOs. Have you heard of this? Privately owned, public, open spaces. And so, like, some cities have many of these, and they like, they catalog them to say, like, and you can look and see what places are available, and you can go to these, like, some of them are tiny little terraces, and some of them are big, and some of them are ground-level, and some of them are raised. Anyways, I would love to see us develop places like that across Clayton, so thank you for that. And then I have a question, probably for our city manager or attorney, which is the commitments as it relates to restaurants and entertainment. We have, we understand it can be, and even the murals, for example, we have had experiences in the past where developers have committed those things to us and not followed through on them. And so I would like to understand what, if any, ability we have to like codify that commitment or put in a remedy in the case that's not followed through on, like, I want to make sure I understand how that works.
Yeah, so there there are protections for each of those items. First one is they're gonna be required to go to the Public Art Advisory Committee, and then they'll make a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen based on the art pieces that are.
I'm not concerned about whether the art will be approved. I'm concerned about whether they will actually put in art. So.
That'll have to be installed in order to get an occupancy permit for the building.
Oh, it has to happen before occupancy?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's part of the.
Okay, I misunderstood. I didn't understand that.
Uh, the the other, the other item, too, that we did add a condition for it on relative to the the jazz club or the entertainment venue is that the entertainment space is occupied within twelve months of the occupancy for the hotel portion. So once the hotel opens, the clock has started on the jazz club, and they have one year to open it.
And if they don't, what happens?
Then we we've got another zoning violation there.
That would be then subject to prosecution, crack or zoning violation.
Okay. And the art actually has to be like, proposed and in progress or done in order to get the occupancy permit? Okay. Thanks. Not that I don't think you want to do all these things, because it's gonna be super cool and everybody's really excited about it. So.
From, like, from the process standpoint, like, the Public Art Advisory Commission, so the building on the curve, which is officially like underway now, the Public Art Advisory Commission, which I'm a part of, because you are, if you're part of the Plan Commission, we met, I don't know, about a month or six weeks ago, and the art was approved. So again, it was approved before the building was.
I appreciate that.
And in the past, when murals have been sort of talked about and not followed through on, there was nothing in the the plan, the.
Yeah, this is more formalized than those past examples.
That it would even be there, let alone have a a provision to ensure it.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
I just wanted to make sure. I want to be very clear. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Fader, anything?
I'm I'm certainly in support of the project. The point that's been raised here about the jazz club, I think there's been a reference to some language about one year. And I I I haven't seen that in what's in front of us. In fact, I was concerned that what's in front of us, for example, talks about with reference to the jazz club, the development will include a forty-five-hundred-square-foot live performance venue in pursuit of a jazz club or similar business, which makes it look like, well, we're gonna try to get a jazz club, or I don't, I also don't know what a similar business is. If everybody is sold on this being a jazz club, which I suppose those of us who remember Finale would like to see a jazz club, but I don't know what a similar business is, and even I think in the the ordinance itself, it talks about the jazz club being maintained for entertainment use or live performance. Uh, I just want to make, I I just, again, I have full trust in the developer when they say they're gonna do what they're gonna do, but I think our language right now is fairly sloppy on it, and I think we need to be real clear that whatever is in the final analysis is, if we, if you guys mean jazz club, it's a jazz club. If you mean similar entertainment, I'd like to know what that is. And if if you're serious about the one year, uh, and we're serious, then I think it needs to be embodied in the document, so we don't. Because we've had other examples, I think, where on multifamily, we require some retail, and and then it doesn't happen, and the argument is, well, it's not in the developer's best interest, because they know they can't use it for anything else, but it sits vacant because they don't want to cut a deal to make it happen. So I think we're all excited about the jazz club. It's gotta happen, and we've got to make sure that the language is real tight on that. And again, if you mean a jazz club, I'd like you to say that, and if you're, I don't know what similar entertainment is. It could be a karaoke bar, I suppose someone could argue in some ways that's similar, so. But but whatever it is, if it's a jazz club, let's commit to it. Let's put it in there. If it's one year, let's be committed to that, and then I think we'll all feel comfortable, and we've got it in writing, and we've got it buttoned down.
And we'll check with Anna here real quick. I know in the development, the P U D document itself, under the development commitments, which is on page eight of the documents, page sixty-three of the packet, it does specifically say in there, the space labeled Jazz Club on level zero zero, as shown on sheet A one oh one, shall be maintained for an entertainment use or live performance venue for the, should say, life of the development there.
Yeah, so I would recommend the one year being added as a condition under planning zoning to Exhibit C for the one year. The reason we referenced live performance venue is the other, the next item tonight is is revising the Entertainment Overlay District, which adds a definition of live performance venue. So in the discussions with the Plan Commission, jazz club is the term that has been used, but it was discussed that it might not be specifically jazz music only for the life of the development. And so the goal with the language in the proposed ordinance is to reference the live performance venue, which will be defined within our city code that does allow for flexibility of the the type or genre of music, but still meets that entertainment goal of the commission.
Excellent. I like that. We, I mean, we wouldn't want to, I don't think, personally, I don't think it has to be jazz.
I agree.
Yeah, it does specifically say in in entertainment use her live performance venue. So those new definitions that are in that Entertainment Overlay District ordinance, those uses would apply to this as well.
And and if I could add, I I wouldn't know how to define jazz to begin with, so.
That's fair, I think.
So I think, so don't make me bring those trash guys back in here, okay? And so the, I I think the 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 goal is is to be a jazz club, but I think also we we were realist here in that can you do six nights of jazz, right? I mean, is that, and so it will be a live venue club featuring jazz, but there probably will be other genres that will be in this club, all right? I mean, that's kind of what, that's why it was structured that way.
Good, good point.
Let's do it.
Okay.
So on, if, in keeping with the discussion and talking with the city manager, uh, it may be in order to make a motion to amend Exhibit E, I believe.
It's.
Is D the?
It is.
Development standards?
Three D under the development commitments.
But I think that's Exhibit D to the ordinance.
Exhibit C.
Exhibit C.
Yeah, I'm trying to get.
To amend Exhibit C, section three D on page eight, to read that the space labeled Jazz Club on level zero zero, as shown on sheet A one dash zero one, shall be opened within twelve months of the hotel certificate of occupants and be maintained for an end payment use or live performance venue for the life of the development.
Aye, aye.
Yeah.
So we can move that that amendment?
I I, well, and I didn't know if Alderman Hummel had any comments before we started making.
I have a question and comment, but it's not germane to this, and I'm fine to defer and take this action and ask my question.
Okay, all right. So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah.
And shall we vote on the amendment? Yes, is it roll call? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Okay, Alderman Hummel.
Thank you. I was hoping that you could briefly give me an idea of why additional hotel rooms in Clayton are either a good business decision or why they're necessary. Um, and I know you have a huge portfolio of hotels, so I'm sure you have a great deal of expertise there. And then why this particular brand? Why is this brand a good fit for our community?
This brand is an upper upscale brand. Uh, it is as close to a boutique hotel as a big chain like Hilton has in their portfolio, and it is attractive to demographic groups that aren't represented currently by the hotels in downtown Clayton. So it matches very well with some of our other hotels, like the Residence Inn, as well as some of the upper upscale hotels like the Ritz-Carlton, who wouldn't compete head-to-head with them, but provides a different niche to the, you know, guests that are staying there.
And and so any insight on, I I know the market's hardly been stable given COVID, but occupancy levels of hotels and and why Clayton's a good market to add more hotel rooms?
So, so we track a lot of, we track a lot, we track a lot of stuff, right? And so Clayton is unique in that there is not, you know, until the Residence Inn opened, there hadn't been a new hotel built in in Clayton in thirty-five years, right? Guests love new. I mean, they just do. And so there was a lot of demand that was, uh, Clayton demand that was really staying outside of the city limits, all right? They were, they were saying in newer products uh, that were outside of the city. Once we built the Residence Inn, it was pretty clear that people came back and wanted to stay in Clayton, because the the Residence Inn ramped up in like ninety days, all right, which is, which is very strong. Uh, so we've, and I don't think from my looking at star information, the other hotels in Clayton haven't been hurt by our new hotel that's been opened. Uh, if anything, we're helping elevate the the rates.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all.
Very good.
I would, and I was just gonna add, too, because I know we've talked about this in our steering committee meetings as well, the hotel occupancy and just because I think it's helpful so that we don't think that all of our hotels will be vacant, or at least, you know, half empty. Um, but in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, before the pandemic, our hotel occupancy was at about seventy-two percent. And in two thousand and twenty-three, we're up to sixty-three percent. So we're not quite in the seventies yet, but I think it's at least encouraging that we're getting there, so.
That's it, as business travel starts to, right, makes a full comeback, which we hope it will, yeah. All right, any other questions by anybody for our developers here? So if there's no further discussion, I'll close the public hearing, and Alderwoman McAndrew.
I will introduce bill number sixty-nine ninety-two to approve a rezoning and a plan unit development for seventy-eight fourteen Forsyth Boulevard and two ten fourteen eighteen South Central Avenue to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Okay, Mr. City, or any discussion? City Attorney?
Bill number six nine nine two, first reading, an ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain property located at seven eight one four Forsyth Boulevard and two ten fourteen and eighteen South Central Avenue to a planned unit development district to be known as the Forsyth Central Planned Unit District, providing for the change in the zoning map of the city of Clayton, Missouri, approving a planned unit development for the subject property and other actions related thereto.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I will move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number sixty-nine ninety-two on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the minutes reflect. The board is giving unanimous consent.
I'll introduce bill number sixty-nine ninety-two to approve a rezoning and a plan unit development for seventy-eight fourteen Forsyth Boulevard and two ten fourteen eighteen South Central Avenue to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Bill number six nine nine two, second reading in consideration for adoption. An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain property located at seventy-eight fourteen Forsyth Boulevard and two ten fourteen and eighteen South Central Avenue to a planned unit development district to be known as the Forsyth Central Planned Unit District, providing for the change of the zoning map of the city of Clayton, Missouri, approving a planned unit development for the subject property and other actions related thereto.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, now we can move into the plat for the same development. Um, Alderwoman McAndrew, sorry.
I'll introduce bill number sixty-nine ninety-three to approve a lot consolidation plat for seventy-eight fourteen Forsyth Boulevard and two ten fourteen and eighteen South Central Avenue to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney?
Bill number six nine nine three, first reading, an ordinance providing for the approval of a plat to consolidate certain property known as seven eight one four Forsyth Boulevard and two ten fourteen and eighteen South Central Avenue and widen an adjacent alley in the city of Clayton, Missouri.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll move that the board gives unanimous consent to consent to consideration for adoption of bill number sixty-nine ninety-three on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, let the minutes reflect. The board is giving unanimous consent.
I'll introduce bill number sixty-nine ninety-three to approve a lock consolidation plat for seventy-eight fourteen Forsyth Boulevard and two ten fourteen eighteen South Central Avenue to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. City Attorney?
Bill number six nine nine three, second reading in consideration for adoption. An ordinance providing for the approval of a plat to consolidate certain property known as seven eight one four Forsyth Boulevard and two ten fourteen and eighteen South Central Avenue and widen an adjacent alley in the city of Clayton, Missouri.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations, gentlemen. Um, we are all really looking forward to the vibrancy that this this vision of yours is gonna bring to Clayton, so we'll be watching, hoping, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The last thing, is it the last thing besides the consent agenda? Okay. Last thing here, the on our agenda, other than the consent agenda, is a text amendment for the Entertainment Overlay District. So I'm gonna open the public hearing and request proof of publication. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing to solicit input regarding proposed amendments to Chapter four-ten overlay and urban design zoning districts to modify definitions, use regulations, and the boundary of the district of the existing Entertainment Overlay District, or E O. The existing overlay district was adopted by the Board of Aldermen on May eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and then modified in two thousand and twenty-one. The Board of Aldermen has continued to discuss the goals and visions of the E O, as the city has not seen a business utilize the options of the E O. As a result of those discussions, the Board of Aldermen directed staff to further refine divisions for live performance venues as a subset of an entertainment venue as related to liquor license and use operations. There are four categories within the proposed amendments. First is the boundary itself. The proposed expansion includes the the majority of the central business district located south of Maryland Avenue, north of Shaw Park Drive, west of Panley Road, and east of Brentwood Boulevard. This boundary captures many of the centralized parking garages in downtown, some of the larger retail spaces, and still provides separation from the denser residential districts. In the definitions section, the proposed amendment includes adding a definition for a live performance venue. This use is more specific than the entertainment use definition and includes qualifying criteria for the operation. Under uses permitted, with the addition of a new use definition, the permitted uses section is amended to include the new use. This section is further amended to remove the modification of liquor license. A new section has been added to the E O to regulate the operation of uses, and the liquor license regulations were relocated to this section. And then under use regulations, a primary function of the E O is to allow for modifications to the liquor license requirements for specific uses within its boundaries. The current E O allows for entertainment uses to obtain a liquor license, provided that no more than seventy-five percent of gross sales may be derived from the sale of alcohol, with twenty-five percent from food sales required. The proposed amendment maintains the current entertainment use provision and adds another for live performance venue. The proposed amendment would allow a live performance venue to obtain a liquor license, provided a minimum of twenty percent of annual gross income or a minimum of two hundred thousand dollars is derived from sales and activities other than the sale of alcohol, which could include ticket sales, admission fees, food sales, et cetera. As entertainment uses and live performance venues may be associated with undesirable impacts such as traffic, parking demands, and noise, these uses will require a conditional use permit. On August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, the Plan Commission held a hearing to solicit input regarding the proposed amendments. The Plan Commission discussed a shared desire for supporting vibrancy and entertainment uses in downtown. Members supported the amendment as a step in the necessary direction, and many felt that the additional actions may be necessary in the future, including removing more barriers and procedural requirements. The Plan Commission voted six one to recommend approval of the proposed amendments. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen hold a public hearing and approve the ordinance.
Very good. Okay, I'll open the discussion, and I think we may have some questions or comments from the audience. Yes, are you here for that, Dan and Linda? No? Yes? Okay, I kind of thought that's why you were coming.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, all the persons. Dave, this is a great idea.
I'm sorry.
This is a great, I'm Dan Phillips, President of the Park Tower. This is a great idea. It's been being prepared for a long time. I couldn't be more pleased that you're moving forward on it. We've been building residential units, condos, apartment buildings for some time. So I hope we've substantially increased the population that'll use this. It'll stop people going out to the county as much because they'll have a place to stop off. And after work, they'll have a place to go. So we strongly support it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Okay, any other discussion online in the audience here? Okay, how about from the Board of Aldermen? Any questions, comments? Oh, okay, yeah, come on up. Just don't forget your name and address.
I'm Rich Goldstein, eight zero two five Maryland Avenue. I'm also president of Maryland Walk Building Association. But I also live in Fort Lauderdale downtown, where there's great music and entertainment. The only caution, I, I want music and entertainment, et cetera. The only caution I have is that you need to be aware of the residents that are living there, trying to sleep at night. So however you work out those rules in Fort Lauderdale, I know a lot of people that are complaining about the noise. And so just keep that in mind.
And we do. Thank you very much. Yeah. Okay, any other comments? Go around.
I, I have one comment, and I appreciated that, the awareness of the residents around there. And I think this is leftover from our experiences during COVID, but I'm fully in support of this, of doing this. But I hope we're also prepared and very clear on when we will react and how we will address any issues that do arise. If there's, you know, trash in the streets or public urination and all that kind of stuff that we've struggled with before and how to crack down on. So as long as we are aware of that as a city and put that all together with, I fully trust our police chief to get that done. This is great.
Very good. Anything else? Anything over here? Yeah.
Just a question. I think this is a great idea, and I'm all supportive of it. My question is, it seems to me you could have a jazz club or entertainment venue, whatever it is. And, and if it was like, it could be one where you charge people to come in, and so therefore you generate sufficient fees doing that. I'm just wondering about the food piece, because as I read the ordinance, as I read it, it looked to me like arguably, as long as your liquor sales were at seventy-five percent, if your other twenty-five percent was just based on fees that you charged people to get in, literally, you would not have to have any food. You could have peanuts and pretzels, and that would be it. But I'm not sure if that's the intent, whether there is a belief that you ought to have some food element. But at least I read the ordinance to say you really don't need any, I think the term they use here is prepared, prepared food or meals, but it doesn't look like you'd necessarily have to have that. So I just wonder, either Kevin or Anna, is that, is that the intent? Because it seems to me that does make a difference. Do you have any expectation of food?
I can certainly just say from my perspective and from our discussions, I think that is the intent. You know, because you think about certain venues that, that we hope will come to us. I mean, bigger venues, and let's just go, let's go really big. Let's go to the rep. No food. I mean, they.
And I think by the way, that's, that's, that's fine with me. I think that's a better solution by not requiring it. But just the way it's worded here, I just wondered if there was any inference that you have to have some five percent, ten percent of meals, but.
Twenty percent of the revenue is non, non.
Okay, that's fine with me.
If I can just build on that a little bit, my only familiarity is on college campuses. If there's a fraternity party or something, there is a requirement of a certain percentage of food just based, based on health and safety standards. We're not, we're not a college university. But whenever you have an establishment with a lot of alcohol, I, I don't know, I don't know what the best, best practice is as far as requiring a certain amount of food being sold. But it's some, I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I have seen it on college campuses where they do.
I've heard it helps sober you up if you have something to eat. That's what I've heard.
Yeah. But I think if you think about entertainment venues in general, they, they often don't have any food. They might have snacks for sale or something like that. And so I think that's what we're trying to do, is allow those kinds of venues to operate. And to have a kitchen is just not going to be viable, you know, for many of them.
Requirement, but yeah.
Yeah.
And I always get a cookie at the rep, by the way.
That's right. So they, you can buy a cookie, yes, but they don't have food service.
It is, it is not a requirement as it's written. There are communities that require, they don't require the sale of food necessarily, but the provision of food, like bags of chips. But we didn't write it that way. If that's something that you would like to, we can add it in. But right now, it's not written that way. I'll also direct specific attention to the clause about the number of performance venues because I know that's something that this board is specifically, or the number of performances that you guys have specifically discussed at the last few discussions on this. So I just want to make sure that I call your attention to that before it's adopted in the way that it's been written right now, because we highlight fifty percent or six, minimum of six days a month. I know it was thrown out a lot with this board, whether we wanted to do a percentage of the number of days that the, that the business is in operation or just have a minimum total number of days per month. So I just wanted to make sure that you took a look at that.
Very good. All right, any further questions, discussion? Anything? Okay. All right, um, all right, so I will close the public hearing. Alderwoman McAndrew.
I'll introduce Bill Number Sixty-nine ninety-four to approve a text amendment to Article Fifteen Entertainment Overlay District to be read for the first time by title only.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill Number Sixty-nine nine-four, first reading, an ordinance amending Article Fifteen Entertainment Overlay District of Chapter Six Ten, I think that should be Four Ten, excuse me, Overlay and Urban Design Zoning Districts of the Municipal Code of the City of Clayton, Missouri. That's a typo in the title, which we'll correct on the execution draft.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'll move that the board gives unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill Number Sixty-nine ninety-four on the day of its introduction.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let the minutes reflect the board is giving unanimous consent. And Alderwoman McAndrew.
I'll introduce Bill Number Sixty-nine ninety-four to approve a text amendment to Article Fifteen Entertainment Overlay District to be read for the second time by title only.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill Number Sixty-nine nine-four, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance amending Article Fifteen Entertainment Overlay District of Chapter Four Ten Overlay and Urban Design Zoning Districts of the Municipal Code of the City of Clayton, Missouri.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. The last thing we have here is just our consent agenda. Mr. City Manager, do you want to say anything at all?
The eight items is listed.
Okay, any discussion of any of those items? I would just want to note that with regard to the boards and commissions appointments, we still have an opening on sustainability. And the reason is that we are trying to find someone from Ward Two to join because all the other members are either Ward One or Ward Three. And so we're just giving it a little more time to see if anybody applies, so. All right, so if there's no further discussion, we can call the roll.
I think I got him.
Alderwoman.
Oh, I'll move.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, yes.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the items listed.
Second. Okay. There's no further discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Sorry, sorry. Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, I think at this point we would often do a roundtable, but I'm going to suggest that perhaps we would go into a closed session right now and just discuss any.
You want to let Ben know we passed his liquor license as part of the consent agenda?
Oh, okay. I didn't realize he had his hand up, sorry.
He just put it up, yeah.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Perumbah?
Yes, this is me.
Yes, do you have a question, or do you, do you know that we did pass your liquor license?
No, I was just on there for a couple hours, so I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't.
You lost track of us?
I may, I may have missed it, you know, when I made dinner for the kids, but I had it on. Sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, it was, you know, there wasn't any discussion or controversy about it. We just passed it.
Okay, well, great. Thank you so much.
You are welcome. Enjoy the rest of your night.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Bye-bye.
You're going to question it.
Oh, excuse me, yes, I'm sorry. Oh. Okay, yes, sorry. We do publish what's on that consent agenda, but if you didn't pull out our agenda, that's fine. I'm sorry about that. Um, all right, so instead of going around, I think since it's quarter to nine, I'd like to propose that we do have a closed session to further discuss some of the issues that came up tonight with our attorney. So if you would go ahead and read the blurb.
I would like to move that the Board of Aldermen hold a closed meeting with a closed vote and record as authorized by Section Six Ten Point Zero Two One, Parts One, Two, and Three of the Revised Statutes of Missouri relating to legal issues, real estate, and/or personnel negotiation of a contract pursuant to Section Six Ten Point Zero Two One, Part Twelve, and/or proprietary information pursuant to Section Six Ten Point Zero Two One, Part Fifteen, and/or information related to public safety and security measures pursuant to Section Six Ten Point Zero Two One, Parts Eighteen and Nineteen of the Revised Statutes of Missouri.
All right. Second. Second, yeah. All those in favor? Or do we do a roll call? Okay, roll call.
Roll call.
Jim.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim.